A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this night pursuant to the following call. In the letter to the Commissioners dated December, I have the 30th, that's not right. December 14th, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners. Dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Moyo.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Here. Good evening, everyone. Welcome here. Thank you for coming. Our meeting will now come to order. Please put your cell phones on silent, if you would. I would appreciate it. Very good. Special orders of business. The county board minutes of 12:523. I would need approval for that.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron. Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion. All those in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They would pass. In reference to the committee of the whole, we had done the approval of tonight's agenda. Commission, is there any adds to the agenda, or would you like to accept it as submitted?
I will make a motion to accept it as submitted.
I'll support.
Commissioner Peterson.
I have an issue that I'd like to bring up. It's on the airport. I see the airport is on here. I don't know if that's, you can put it in under that, or if I have to put a special motion here.
What are you?
Does it have to do with the interest of the public?
No, it does not. So make an addendum. Make an addendum. All right. Then I would like to add on where we think it's appropriate, the airport.
All right. It would be under new business, I presume?
Mm-hmm.
And so you just, your addendum would be discussion airport, or?
Yes.
All right. So under new business, item 19, can we put Mr. Peterson's addendum for the airport? That's under new business, item 19. Is there anything else to come before the commission in terms of the agenda? Motion and a second.
Well, I withdraw my second on the original motion because it's an addendum to it right now.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor of?
No, we have to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
They withdrew, so.
Yeah, so Bobby, you have to make a motion. We have to have a second. I apologize.
I will make a motion to accept as?
Addended or amended?
Amended.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Melner to?
I'll support that.
And support by Commissioner View. Additional discussion. All those in favor of accepting the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very well. Thank you. We have an agenda. Presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded. Ashley?
There are none.
There are none. All right. Reports of standing statutory special committees and others. Are we, do we have anything in that as far as?
Nope.
There is nobody signed up to talk about agenda items for tonight's agenda. I'll give you, anybody? Mr. Kaplan, welcome.
Those are like for four minutes and such. You would go under Department Updates, number four.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Very good. So then there is no one to talk about agenda items. All right. Very good. We don't have any public comment. Admin, committee reports, excuse me.
Do you want to do administrator's report?
Yes, first, Ashley.
I attended the Delta County Conservation District meeting on December 13th, 2023. During the meeting, several topics concerning the county were presented, such as a dump trailer, technology, and 10% administrative operational costs. I brought the dump trailer and administrative operational cost to the Finance Committee yesterday. I also spoke with IT Director Cavillion, and he noted that the county will purchase new technologies, since this will be connected to our systems. This is for a security measure on our part. I did communicate with the Chair of the Conservation District that we would like the opportunity to transfer necessary files from the district to the county, and I would like to also note that we did purchase two computers through the district parks, and they are currently being prepared by our IT department. It was also discussed that old documents were found in the basement of Pioneer Trail Park that were from prior to the Conservation District taking management of the park. Those files were removed from the premises and brought to the Conservation District Chair's personal residence. I have requested to return those files to the Delta County Administration to be filed appropriately. I also sent the request, extension request to MDNR Trust Fund, and I'm currently awaiting the response. Commissioner Peterson has spoken earlier with MDNR for requesting, before we sent this request, and it was noted that it would be obtainable. The Delta, Delta County is also looking at nearing 250 FOIA's that have been prepared this year. Two years ago, we were just over 50 FOIA's. So with this increased number of FOIA's, the personnel costs associated with the FOIA process has become a financial burden. Our employees are required to spend more time searching, redacting, and preparing to their everyday duties. With this, Delta County will begin to charge for FOIA's according to the FOIA, Delta County's FOIA policy. I am currently working on a FOIA that, just for an example, is 1,400 emails that I have to read and redact when appropriate. And also, I'd like to mention, this is our last meeting of 2023, and I wish everyone a Happy New Year.
I have a question before we put this on file. But first, the commission, any questions, Sean? In regards to that FOIA policy, is that something you would like to see sent to the Finance Committee?
It, we already have one in place.
Okay.
So we just follow that.
And is it sufficient to warrant the time? You know, is, I'm not, I don't want to make it punitive or penalizing any of FOIA's, but is it sufficient to cover the time?
Uh, it's statement, or statute.
So we meet, we meet state statute?
Yeah, we just follow that.
All right. Very good. Oh, I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron to accept. Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion. Those in favor of putting the administrator's report on file signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and passes. Personnel Committee minutes of 12:1523. Mr. Melner.
Okay. We had a meeting on Friday, and we went over three different things. One of them was a part-time airport clerk, which me and Commissioner View both said that we should bring it to the full board to see what goes on. It was a motion carried by the two of us. The second thing was a airport marketing consultant, and we didn't believe at that time that we should go in with a marketing consultant until things get moving. Third thing was a, let's see here, building and zoning administrator job description. We approved that description, so we brought it to the full board to see for approval.
I, any questions for Mr. Melner, Chairman of that board? Anything? All right. I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner View. Supported by Commissioner Melner to place this on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. We have a Finance Committee meeting of 12:1823. Mr. Barron.
Yes, we, we met yesterday for a good length of time. We had a number of items, and there's a number that will be on the agenda, further on the agenda, so I would make a motion to put these minutes on file.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barron. Support. Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They would pass. Department head updates, please.
Thanks for having me. Joe Kaplan, Conservation District Chair. I just wanted to give an update on, as our formal partnership with the county to manage the parks and forest lands is coming to an end. This is a notable transition, of course, for the county and our community, and there's no question that the legacy of those parks forever tied to the actions of the district. More importantly, or just as important, is during this transition, you've made the wise decision to hire Steve Wary, who's been the park manager for the district for the last 12 years, and Steve will move forward to be your park manager. And I can tell you one thing, if you treat him well, he will without question continue to treat your parks well. There's no one more dedicated and knowledgeable how those parks run than Steve Wary, so there's no question about you are in good hands with that. I would also like to remind the county and the public that the district will continue to remain to provide assistance to the county, if you so choose, with conservation, agriculture, forestry. We have a dedicated staff that are now up in Gladstone, and they, they are here to assist private property owners for conservation, agriculture, and forestry, and a lot of people take advantage of that. There's a lot of state and federal money, your tax dollars through the farm bill, federal and also through the state Michigan Department of Ag, that is allocated to 75 districts across Michigan to provide those services, to basically be a liaison between private landowners and professionals in our community. Goes without saying that also with the end of our formal relationship, partnership over the parks, that our district manager Rory Mattson is also retiring shortly at the end of the year, and certainly the face of the parks and the forest really reflect this one-man tour de force, and there's certainly no argument that his drive and dedication over this last 30-plus years is why we have a park system that's worth fighting for and often fighting over. So, I won't take up any more of your time. I'm used to my three minutes, but I'm sure that if Mr. Mattson has anything to say now would be an appropriate time. Rory said that he didn't want to take the podium, but maybe he'd change his mind. If not, I would hope that you would take this opportunity to thank him yourself on behalf of the county.
Do any of you have questions? Before you jump off?
Well, the only thing I would ask is if there's anything that we need to be aware of, will you send that to the administration?
Oh, yeah. I think we're, you know, some of it's on the, yeah, yeah, we'll.
I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we're pretty much done. I mean, we got your letter from last time, so we're moving equipment around, and Steve's still in the parks, working on making that office something to be proud of. It's, you know, it's been an operational office for the Conservation District, but it's almost completely empty now, and 40, you know, 12 years ago when they took it over, as Ashley said, I mean, there is stuff in that basement from probably the 19, dickity whatever. I don't know what to say. At least records 40 years old, so like original park documents and all the things that, you know, nobody even were aware of down in that basement. So Steve is working hard, and the rest of the district board and staff are just assisting him to get ready to turn over to you so that you can continue to, to manage these parks in a sustainable way. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Don't forget about Rory.
Thank you.
Actually, I would, I would like to have Mr. Mattson come up for just a minute.
I really decline, appreciate it, but this could be one of your fastest meetings. I would really like to give that to the public.
All right. Then, then in that case, I would just like to move that we thank Mr. Mattson for his years of dedicated service, and I hope that he enjoys his retirement and gets some more of those big bucks he keeps telling me about, but he hasn't shown me their amounts yet.
Platform. Know what he did?
I think we can. That's all I wanted to do, Rory. I wanted to embarrass you in front of everybody.
General orders of business, unfinished business, there appears to be none new business, be the payment of our bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills is $1,247,635.20, and commissioner expenses of $355.50.
We would need a roll call. I need a motion.
I move to pay the bills.
Miss, moved by Commissioner Barron. Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additionally, conversation, or discussion. We'll have a roll call. Please.
Commissioner Melner.
Yes.
View.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moyo.
Yes. That would pass unanimously. All right. The 2024 Remuneration Grant application, please.
In front of you is the application for the remonumentation grant. This is an annual grant that is run on a calendar year. Scheduled for this year's activities are 82 corners, totaling 700, or I'm sorry, $76,366 requesting to be awarded. Administration is requesting approval and authorization for myself to sign the grant application.
I would like to correct myself. It is not remuneration, it is remonumentation. Let your motion reflect that, whoever's going to make it.
I would move that we allow her to take care of the remonumentation grant.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner View. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The remonumentation grant application passes. 2024 Contract Davis-Wannick Surveyors.
This is a contract with Davis and Wannick Surveyors to begin the work that was proposed in the 24 remonumentation grant, and administration is seeking approval and signatures for, from Chairman Moyo and myself.
I will make a motion that we approve that contract.
Move by Commissioner Melner.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson or View?
Peterson.
Peterson. Additional discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. 2024 Drug Court.
Hold on. She wants to talk.
Oh, I do apologize.
No problem. Appreciate the approval of the contract. Terrence Wannick, Delta County Surveyor and owner of Davis-Wannick Surveying. Just like to give you a little update of what happened in 2023 and where we stand in the program. As Ashley stated, we completed 107 corners in 2023, giving us a grand total of 4,790 monuments that have been established in the county. There are 607 monuments left to be monumented in the, in the program as it stands now. With those totals, we are now 89% complete with the remonumentation program. Keep in mind, it was supposed to take 20 years, and we're in our 32nd or 33rd year now, and we're still not done. They underestimated the wildness of the UP when they first come out with the contract, so. And as Ashley stated, we're scheduled for 82 corners next year. The reason there's a decrease, we got a reduction in funding from the state, and the cost of the monumentation supplies has gone up greatly. Aluminum monuments and things of that sort, the cost has skyrocketed in the last couple of years, so. We're on schedule for 82. Obviously, if there's money left in the budget, we always do additional corners rather than turn money back in, so. If you have any questions on 23, if you have to answer them?
I do, just real quick. These monuments, they're on section corners, or?
Yeah, section control corners, yes.
Okay.
Which include also the center sections. There's nine controlling monuments in, in a section, a square mile.
Okay.
Originally, the centers were not being placed, and the state went on, went on and approved that, but they said do it in populated areas or where you think they're necessary, or if that monument was needed to set a controlling corner that was missing. So they've now changed their mind on that and allow us to set centers. So we're doing that, especially in, in the populated areas, the cities, you know, anywhere where there's a lot of action going on, that's where we're putting these centers of sections. So it did add some monuments to the contract, and what we did do when we decided to start putting centers in is we removed some of the forest service lands from the contract, figuring, you know, it's mostly wilderness and those monuments are not as important, and the Forest Services now begin putting their monuments in on their own. So the necessary, our necessity of doing them is not there, so. So we're doing, we're doing well. We got 607 left. As long as the state funding comes, keeps coming, I think we should be done in about six years.
Any other questions, Sean?
I just have one more thing, and I would just, this is just an informational thing for the people here. With your monuments in the woods, there's, you've got trees that are markers.
Correct. Witness trees.
Right. To show that, where that marker is, and I just want people to know that they're there, and if you see that, it's not supposed to be tampered with.
Right. Those are very important, especially if it's an area where that monument could get destroyed. Those are called witness trees, and what we can use, even though with the advent of GPS, it's not quite as important because we have the ability to duplicate the corner to the exact point every time with GPS, but in the older days, those trees were all very important because on our corner records that are filed, those trees are all listed with distances and bearings to them, so if something happened to the actual monument, if the trees are still there, you can still replace the corner from its original position. So if you ever come across a monument or something that looks important, a sign on a tree, please don't cut it down unless you call us first, because a lot of times we'll come out and replace those corners or monument trees or whatever. And that actually is going to take place when we switch over to what's called the maintenance program, which will begin when we end the corner setting. We're going to switch to what's called maintenance, and now we're going to start revisiting all the corners we've already been to and looking for things where they've got destroyed or buried or things of that sort. So the maintenance program's going to take over once we're done with the regular project. And again, thanks again for approving the 24.
Thank you for your service.
Yep.
Just a couple of things about that. It's not state, it's not funded by the state. Actually, any person who records a document in the Register of Deeds Office, $2, or maybe it's raised to $4 now. Anyway, it's, there's an amount that comes out of each of those, that each person is charged for those documents that goes into the remonumentation fund, and that, we have to send that money to the state, and then the state sends it back to us as we apply for it. And I have to tell you, several years ago, Jennifer Granholm, Governor Granholm, took $15 million out of that fund, and that's what slowed it down because she used that to shore up what was going on in the state at that time. So that was designated monies that she, she took away from, from the area. And the reason we have to do the remonumentation is, this was originally surveyed in the 1840s with rods and chains.
1850s, yeah.
Yeah, 1840s and 50s with rods and chains, and, and so they're going through and remarking those monuments so that they're accurate, but they're pretty accurate for having been done with rods and chains.
Yeah, for the time period and the tools they were using at the time, the accuracy is very good. I mean, you'd be surprised how close those guys were. I mean, they would go out for months at a time and never come back. They'd just keep walking for miles and miles and miles and miles, so. It's the, when you start measuring the data and seeing how close they were over, over miles and over, and especially in direction, I mean, your chain is only so long, so your distance is typically good, but direction was the problem. I mean, a compass is not that accurate. I mean, especially if you get in lands where there's ore deposits and things, you could get lost in a hurry, so. Matter of fact, a compass by my personal camp, 34 degrees from north. So if you, if you're not aware of that, you're walking northeast, 34 degrees, and you're not going to get anywhere where you think you're going. So you got to be careful of that. That's why the advent of the modern equipment has kind of changed so much. I mean, now I can, if I shoot the top of this thing and come back a week later, it's going to tell me it was right there. So I, I mean, that's the accuracy. So again, thanks for approving the contract for next year, and I'll be back next year to give you an update.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Hey, you. All right. The 2024 Drug Court Grant Contract.
This grant is to support Delta County's drug court program. The amount for this year is $45,000, and administration is requesting to ratify the signature that I made on December 15th.
I would need a motion.
So moved.
Support. Commissioner View moves. Commissioner Barron supports. Additional discussion?
Good program.
It is. Absolutely.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That passes unanimously. Number five is the 2024 Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant.
So Delta County receives this funding for the marijuana operation and oversight grant and passes it through to the Public Health, Delta, and Menominee Counties as a sub-recipient. The Health Department is looking this year to partner with marijuana retail establishments and local agencies serving medical marijuana users to distribute safe storage lockbays and educate about the safe storage of medical marijuana. So administration is requesting the approval and authorization to sign for this grant application.
Then I would need approval or a motion to make, allow administration to sign for the application.
I'll move that we sign for that application.
Move by Commissioner View. Supported by Commissioner Melner that we sign for this grant. Application, additional discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Barron has?
Steve.
Please.
Steve is first.
All right, Steve, go ahead.
I'm supporting it. Can you, do we know how much funding this will bring in? I mean, what we're asking for?
It looks like 82, then 97.
Yep.
And that's to lock up medical marijuana prescriptions like or something? Okay.
The additional discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Ashley, on these points here on the first page of Section 3, the bottom point, it says, describe the impact these funds will have on the community and what you hope to accomplish. I thought, when I read that, I was, it was striking in that it said, who filled this out, the Health Department?
The Health Department did.
Okay. And just for the public's knowledge here, in a recent survey conducted by the American Addiction Center, three in four parents would rather their children use marijuana than alcohol. And it is known that parental and peer attitudes regarding medical marijuana use are impactful. Many use perceive that medical marijuana is safe. I thought that was striking. It said three in four parents would rather their, their children use alcohol than marijuana. So what first struck me when I read it was, well, then, that the one in four wants them to use marijuana, but all four of them would rather them use some drugs. I think the first instinct would be, don't use any of them. But the, but the striking part is, there was, there was a book that I read here last winter that was, Tell It to Your Children. It is about the THC, which is the main drug for marijuana. Alcohol and marijuana are both considered intoxicants. The, and if you, if you consume enough alcohol and damage your liver to the point, it can become a psychotic, create psychosis, whereas the marijuana that we've, they use today and the concentration's so high that you could have psychosis on the first use. This is a very, this is probably unknown to the public, but it's, it's getting more and more documented that it may be the most dangerous drug in America because we, we think it's safe. It's a false premise. There was reasons why it was outlawed for 100 years plus. This, because 125 years ago, they figured out how to concentrate this, and psychosis was a horrible problem, and it has been with this now, especially with the doses that are there, so hopefully there's that awakening, but at least, but there shouldn't be a choice that, well, I'd rather have my children drink alcohol rather than do drugs three out of four. You didn't do any of them. None of it's any good. They're both, they're both intoxicants, they're both poisons to your system.
Thank you.
That's, thank you.
All right. We need a motion on that, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. All right. All right, the appointment to the Data Board, we have one opening, Mr. Dana Benakinport, so I would need a motion to replace him. Put him back on the board is what I mean.
I will make the motion to put him back on the board.
Move by Commissioner Peterson?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion?
Does, has he attended all the board meetings and most of them?
No way of knowing, but I know they wanted him back.
Okay.
They asked for him back. I believe he's been, you know, he's worked, but.
The, the other thing is when there's an opening, we don't post the opening if somebody wants it back. Is that the policy?
I don't know what the boards do.
If there is an opening?
Say the terms up. It looks like they just filled out something that says that, yes, I would like to be reappointed to the Data Board. We don't.
We send out, or administration sends out a letter asking if they want to be reappointed.
Okay, so we don't post it if they want to?
I believe it was on a, if they want to, the individual to be reappointed?
No, no, if, if, when there's an opening, we don't let the public have an.
There was a 30-day announcement.
Okay, there was a 30-day notification. You didn't receive any applications?
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That would pass. Thank you, Mr. Benakinport. Medical Examiner Contract, you have the information, that's item number seven.
Yes, presented today is the Medical Examiner Contract that will expire on December 31st, 2023. The only change that was made to this contract was removing Dr. Stephen Dosh as the deputy and appointing Dr. Kristinelli as the deputy. Also, Dr. Godby is planning on this to be his last contract with Delta County as the medical examiner. So we discussed a succession plan, and he would like to see Dr. Kristinelli as the deputy this year to, in the future in 2025, to put him as the medical examiner.
Well, I would need a motion to approve this.
I'll, I'll move that we sign the agreement for Delta County Medical Examiner Service Agreement as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner View, support by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion?
Just one question, is this contract just for you?
This year.
Okay, all right.
That's all.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. MEI contracts.
So this contract again expires December 31st. There's three MEIs. The only changes that have been made for this contract is we are adding holiday pay. So these individuals are on call whenever there's.
What does the acronym stand for?
It is medical, let me see.
Investigator, Medical Examiner Investigator.
Yeah, medical investigators.
All right, well, then I would need a motion to pass three of these MEI contracts.
I'll make the motion to pass the MEI contracts.
Move by Commissioner Peterson?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to know is, do we have their backgrounds in the medical field and that? Because it doesn't give any, any qualifications on, is it a recommendation from the actual medical examiner for these people, or they just apply for this?
So they have to have certain criteria, and that's written in the contracts of what they need to have. Let me pull it up.
No, that, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just somebody that.
And there, there isn't, it isn't anybody new. They're the same three that we had from prior years. They want, the only thing they requested was for holiday pay. And I have itemized which holidays it applies for.
That's if they work on the holiday or they get holiday pay?
Yes.
No matter what?
Just when they work on the holiday. If they get called in because of a death that they have to investigate on a holiday.
They get a standard monthly stipend?
It's an hourly payment.
Yep, okay.
And then also on-call payment per month.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This would pass. E. Headington Transfer Request to Fill the Custodian One Position.
So I'm just looking for approval to transfer Mr. Headington over to the airport and then post him, fill his vacancy.
I'll make the motion that we okay the transfer of Mr. Headington and also let Ashley post and fill the vacancy.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, Part-Time Airport Clerk, item number 10.
So this was presented to the, both the Personnel and the Finance Committee. Administration is seeking approval from the Board of Commissioners to create this temporary part-time position to assist the airport at this time, and I'm also seeking to post and fill.
When I went, I went out to see Mr. Ransdattler and asked him what the board could do to help him, and this is one of the first things he mentioned. I think this has passed the Finance Committee and Personnel?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll move that we post this and fill this position as quick as possible.
Move by Commissioner View?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. With additional discussion from anyone? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That would pass. Thank you, Mr. Ransdattler, for your assistance. All right, we have the Building and Zoning Administration Job Description.
So this job description was recommended by the Personnel Committee. However, the increase related to the additional job duties has been tabled at the Finance Committee, so I'm seeking no action at this time.
So we don't have to do anything on that?
Correct.
Okay. Item, item 12 would be the Non-Union Cost of Living Adjustments.
This year's recommendation for the non-union cost of living adjustment from the Finance Committee is 3.5%. Administration is seeking approval for the non-union COLA.
I'll, I'll move that we give the 3.5% non-union cost of living.
We have a motion by Commissioner View?
I'll support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Any additional discussion, gentlemen?
The reason I support it is I think it's already built into the budget, if I'm not correct, Ashley?
Yes, yes, it is.
And it's not something that we're going to have to worry about down the road. You looked at legacy and all that other stuff. So I just wanted to make the public aware that we have it pretty well. Ashley did a pretty good job looking ahead and making sure that we can afford something like this. And, and that's, that's, that's fair across the board. It may not be as high as the 8% or whatever happened before, but that's why I'm supporting it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Building and Zoning Administrator Increase for Soil and Erosion Duties.
So this is related to Agenda Item Number 11, so I'm not requesting any action for this item as, as well as Number 18 of the agenda.
All right, so 13 and 18, it would be synonymous, all right? So seeing that there's, very good. Item Number 14 is Mail Machine Replacement.
The mail machine for the county needs to be replaced, and this has been recommended by the Finance Committee, and funds will be taken out of Fund 401, capital O.
Gentlemen?
I would make a motion that we okay the purchase of the mail machine.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion?
Do we get a trade-in value for the old one?
Somebody took somebody's camp and blew the hell out of it.
Well, no, what, what do you do with the old equipment then?
You're over my head with that.
Do, do we auction it off for parts? There's always a value.
My boat needs an anchor.
How long has this last one lasted? So we get an idea, is this?
When was the last time? It was 25 years ago. I think it was five years ago we received a new mail machine.
So in this, and the cost of this one's just, just over, just over $11,000 in the last, that's a pretty good bargain.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now will get a new mail machine. All right, we have Electronics Stats Historical, yeah, Historical Election Results Database.
This agenda item did not move further from the Finance Committee, so there is no action necessary for this one also.
All right. Number five would be the Dump Trailer, it's $2,000. I remember this well, there was, it's a unique situation. We have three owners of a trailer, a dump trailer. The Conservation District is one, Mr. Mattson is the other, and the county is the third. And now, and at that time, it made very much sense to do that. But things have changed, whatever, what is your, I'm sure there's going to be questions on this because I'm confused by it, but.
Well, the only thing I'm looking at is, is there any value to that dump trailer for both the Conservation District and for the county?
And for Mr. Mattson, there's, yeah, all three people have.
Well, Mr. Mattson's a private owner at that time.
Doesn't matter, I mean, he's the one-third owner of it. So we're going to have to do something with the symbiosis to it.
And, and I would just like to bring up that this $2,000 was $2,000 paid by each entity. Mr. Mattson paid $2,000, the county paid $2,000, and, and the district paid $2,000. So whoever gets the trailer or however we despise, dispense of it, say if the county keeps it, they would owe $4,000. They'd owe $2,000 to Mr. Mattson, they'd also owe $2,000 to the district. And, and of course, however that rotates around as to who gets it. I just wanted to make sure because there was mention that we were selling it for $2,000, and that wasn't, that wasn't accurate.
I think it's, not that we can do anything about this, but Rory took a bath with two grand on it too because the thing broke and he had to fix it.
What's the value of the trailer at this date?
I believe it was said, they said it was purchased for $6,000, purchase price.
Not all long ago.
Yeah, I mean, what's the value today?
Was it 2016 or 17 we purchased it? You have that information?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. It was on January 15th, 2016.
All right.
I think it was purchased.
Memory's still working. What would you like to do, do you want to keep it or do you want to sell it?
Well, does the county have a use for it, Ashley? Have, have you heard anything from the Maintenance Department or the parks that we could use that trailer?
They did put in a request to keep it within the county.
I've got to tell you, do you remember this, were you serving in 16? Or were you a road commissioner?
I was here.
All right, we had some discussion, and Rory was, there's nothing in hiding, Rory was given the first, first right of refusal on it. If, if.
Was that hiding somewhere?
I just said that we don't, I don't think we have it hiding. Like we did things on a handshake back then, it worked, but this clearly changed.
He has first rights, then.
I, I.
I believe in stuff like that.
Mr. Peterson, go ahead, I do too.
I'm, I'm going to hold my comment for the moment.
Okay. Um, what?
Well, at the Finance Committee meeting, I thought, Ashley, do we table this?
No. So what we did is the Finance Committee recommended Administrator Young to work, or I'm sorry, to offer Mr. Mattson the trailer for $2,000 contingent upon Administrator Young's research on the correct process to dispose of assets that are co-owned with a private individual. Until then, the trailer is to remain at Pioneer Trail Parks.
Well, the Service, or the Conservation District has got, I mean, got to chime in on this too, so.
Yes.
Can you read that again?
Okay. The Finance Committee has recommended to accept Mr. Mattson's offer by buying out the county's portion of the trailer for $2,000 contingent upon Administrator Young's research on the correct process to dispose of county assets that are co-owned with a private individual. Until then, the trailer is to remain at Pioneer Trail Parks. So the reason for the contingency is that because we are a government, we can't just dispose of our assets. We usually have to put them out to bid first.
We do have to put them to bid, but go ahead.
The Finance Committee recommended that. So I, I would, I would move that we follow what the finances, as long as all the i's are dotted, t's crossed, and it follows the proper procedure, we go through with that.
Well, we go through with that. I mean, you're going to have to have a discussion with the Conservation District and with Rory.
And, and the policy and rules of how we dispose of privately owned stuff.
So if it was just 100% our asset, we would have to go through a bid process. However, since there is a private individual that owns part of it?
A third of it.
Can we, you know?
Well, that's what you're going to check into.
Put it, and that's what I have to check into. We just had the finance meeting yesterday at 1:45, so I have an.
Well, they discussed it.
I'm thinking that we need to table this then until you get.
Well, I think, I think what we came up with, the Finance Committee meeting, and as Steve has made a motion, is what we, we still need that information. And if we make that motion, then Ashley can put together what we, we came up with yesterday, which this may come back to us in January.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize administration to research this issue. I will support, you make the motion, I don't really want to, it's determined.
Steve, you have to follow through with what the finance.
Mr. View moved, Mr. Peterson supports. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. DCD 10% Administrators.
No, again, we came up with, what is it? We came up with.
Okay. The Finance Committee recommended Administrator Young to work with the district to finalize the 10% administrative costs with the exclusion of the credit card fees and surcharges. The reason why I, I put that caveat in there is because that is actually not part of the contract. However, during discussion, it was agreed upon to add that and present it to the district. And the district was present at, Chair Kaplan and a Director Sagorsky was also there. And the personnel costs of the parks manager and district managers, because there's two individuals, to be reimbursed. Background on that, there is additional costs with the parks manager on his payout that would be directly related to the parks that the county would be reimbursing the Conservation District to make sure that it's paid through park funds. And then also, the recommendation was for the district managers to be reimbursed for work hours put in at the county parks that are not currently applied in the trial balance that was presented to us.
Well, what is our previous practice? I know there's some differences of opinion here, and so.
It's not so much a difference of opinion. We, we went through two and a half hours, but two of it was on this yesterday. And because we're, we're working with reams of numbers with different views, I think that's a fair description. And we, what we put together there was so that it gives Ashley and, working with Rory to finish this out, because Rory knows these numbers on this, what's taking place here. I have one right here, Ashley, this, 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 right here, I have Martina. That's the one we were looking for?
Yes.
I don't know if you. That was one of the numbers that we didn't have yesterday. So there's a few things that have to be put back together, right, Bob? That's what we worked on. And so, reading what, what Ashley put forward, there's, it's again similar to what we did on the dump trailer in the sense is that we want Ashley to be working this out. These are details that, well, as we had, when you work on that for a number of hours, you get a lot more questions and more answers need to be had. So I think that's, that's what we'd like to do, is move forward that way and that, let them iron out this last little bit.
Come back to us?
What's that?
And then come back to the board?
Yes, yes.
So no motion, or a motion to give out the administrator time to? Or what?
Yes, I'll withdraw, we'll withdraw, and Commissioner Barron can make the.
I'm, I'm not, I don't know if we necessarily need a motion, but we can, we'll make one that the, our administrator would finish the details, working with, in conjunction with Rory Mattson on this to finish out this 10%. So we get the final numbers that we worked on yesterday, but we have a few missing pieces. So that'd be my motion.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Barron and a support by Commissioner Peterson with additional discussion. Anybody?
What, what's, has it been 10% every year for administrative costs? That's just the final year? I'm trying to figure out where that 10% is coming from.
That's part of the fiscal year '23 contract.
Okay, so the contract we already signed, there was a 10% contingency that would be paid out to the administrator.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, item 18 has been scuttled, and then item 19, Mr. Peterson, the airport?
Yes. I just want everybody to know that I didn't know how to write this one up. I wanted to make sure that it was clear and it covered all the bases. So I talked to council about this. I'd like to move that the board refer to its civil counsel, Scott Graham, the investigation of airport activity and policy that may have violated local, state, or federal law, as well as contractual obligations or any other airport right, duty, or obligation. The basis for this motion and referral is the, is the fact that, considering the finding required by MCL 4971, the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney is unable to properly represent the county in this matter and investigation because of the nature of the issues involved, the legal complexity of the, the issues, and the existence of conflicts of interest that would arise based on the investigation of the contact, conduct of county employees.
Support.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, I have support, by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion, gentlemen? Anything?
How can you, how can you discuss something you don't know from the ball? And then spending money to find out what's, what's going on is all I'm saying. I mean, I got to be true to myself and to my constituents and spending money, and I need to know a little more details of why we need to investigate employees that left our county.
I don't know that that's what the money's being allocated for.
That's what he said.
You want to read it again? Go ahead, because I.
Just the top part.
I move that the board refer to its civil counsel, Scott Graham, the investigation of airport activity and policy that may have violated local, state, or federal law, as well as contractual obligations or any other airport right, duty, or obligation.
The, well, Steve, what we have here is, is, we had that report. And I've produced it a number of times. If you go, and I've perused it a number of times. There's, uh, there's, uh, a lot of things that have been presented, thirty-eight different specific items. Uh, and, uh, I believe strongly that we need to go further investigating in this. There's, there's, uh, things that we don't know about. There's, there's, uh, and we need to clarify the situation. And that's going to take deeper investigation.
If there is something that we cannot come to a consensus with after our new airport manager gets everything back on track, then I may consider going that route. But if files are missing, documents are missing, things weren't done right, I, I would like all the facts to be given to the commission first before we hire an attorney to, to dig into just what he can't find or, or whatever. I, I, I really don't know what we're trying to do here.
We're try- oh, go, sorry.
We're trying to protect the county.
Uh, I talked to a assistant that was on the county board for, or on the airport board for a while. And she actually got fired by, after Kelly was there. And the next manager that they hired actually come in and she told me that he took and threw out boxes of paperwork from the feds.
This, this is just since twenty-twenty, or twenty-nineteen that we're looking into.
Any other discussion?
We got to go back farther than that though, because there's paperwork from that.
And, and, and the reason I did this is because I did not want to limit, uh, Mr. Graham in his, so if, if his journey takes him back to that point, then he will go there.
Mr. Baron.
Well, this, uh, what we need this for is to help get that information that Commissioner View is looking for. And I think, uh, all of us are looking for that. That we need to, uh, it, the detailed investigation is essential here and.
Yeah, this is just, this is not necessarily to go after anybody. This is not to assign blame. What, if it, you know, he's going to follow where it goes, but his initial, uh, desire is to help in any way that he can, whether it be working with F, the FAA, MDOT, trying to get more time to do the studies, whatever, wherever he's needed, he wants to help.
He is seeking to protect the county with this, not add his pockets.
I agree, but I think it's premature. Uh, we, we need to give, you know, six months to a year to, to see where we are, as long as we're on track.
Mr. Mallory.
To follow all the.
You know, uh, this assistant manager was telling me that the airport's been in trouble for several, several years, like ten, ten years. So I think this goes way back and at this time, I just think that our new airport manager should see what he can do to get things right, to get, to keep moving along.
Anybody else, please? Mr. Baron? Mr. Peterson? Mr. View?
No, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, um, basically to refer this to Mr. Graham for investigation. Uh, give a roll call on this since it's been a contentious issue, please, clerk.
No.
You.
No.
Baron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Moyle.
Yes. All right. This would be, uh, time for general public comment. General public comment. You receive, uh, three minutes to address the board on anything that you find pertinent. And we would welcome you to state your name and take your three minutes. Anybody? One more call, please, for general public comment.
Good evening, Semadits. Delta County meetings might be a stage for some people to come shout and blame others focusing on how they were treated unfairly by the county commissioners instead of checking on themselves if they were doing their jobs correctly. At this point, I want to say I feel grateful for having Ashley Young and Robert Rens- Stadler uh, on these important positions. It looks like we won't lose our county airport. It was shocking for me to watch an employee call her employers unprofessional and more also. To me, these county board meetings are informational. We need to know how to work together when we have difficult times as a county. I voted for a county commissioner because he's an honest and hardworking citizen. He knows, supports, and defends United States Constitution. But I think a group of people had a different person in their minds and are working to replace him. It is sad for most of us to see that this is happening to two more commissioners. Now, I'm thinking, will they protect the Delta citizens if they're replacements? Are they going to, uh, protect the Delta citizens from unconstitutional orders of state and federal governments? I took an oath when I became citizen of the United States of America. And it was saying, I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies foreign and domestic. I wish you Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General public comment, please. Anybody else on general public comment? Mr. Mattson?
Uh, just really quick on two items, the dump trailer and of course the administrative costs. If you guys go back to two thousand nine, when we started with the saw and erosion with the county, because the county came to the district. In two thousand ten, they came to the district for the parks. And I think if you just look at your parks, if you knew what they look like when we started, there, there's really not much question there. I know the district itself wrote grants for the parks at one point five, six million dollars besides the allocations and things. And I think the effort that was put in there was amazing. So the ten percent administrative cost, um, I kind of brokered that for the district board, uh, before the extra ten years was going to come for the reason of the district itself needs to exist. Every grant that we get has an administrative fee, whether it's from MDA, DNR, DQ, feds, that keeps the district there. So there is a cost if you run a business to the business, just to have it there. Can't have a restaurant if you don't have a building. Um, and then, of course, different things that were charged outside. So we took employees that weren't on the county dime or the park dime, but needed them at times to come in on separate occasions and work nights, work weekends. And the district always promised them that money. So that, to me, was no different than a seasonal or a contractor. So I was really appreciative. When we met the other day, Ashley and the board, uh, of the finance committee, I thought we came to what was best for the district and, uh, the county, and then the dump trailer. Why would I ever do such a silly thing? Well, if you remember, county board asked me in two thousand twelve to talk the district into, which I did, to finance a building, that's your pavilion, at, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars where the district was responsible for the loan. But we didn't own the, the pavilion. We didn't own the land it was on, but we did it. So it's the same thing with the dump trailer. So each of us to save money, put in two thousand dollars. When we got it, I knew there was problems with the lift. So just, I was always promised that if it dissolved, that I could have first bid. So I put two thousand of my own money into it. Probably lose that now, no matter what, but that's okay. But that's why we did it. We constantly did things to save the county money, the district money, and to move ahead with handshakes. And just to hear the lady who came up before, we got to stop this garbage, this fighting and attacking and stuff that's going on nationally, because that's not Delta County. And everybody needs to work together like we started in two thousand nine, because amazing things can get done. So there's bickering, Republican Party, Democrat Party, like to get rid of it all. So anyway, um, I am willing to buy the county out and the district, and we'll see where it goes. Otherwise, I guess it is what it is. It'd be a mistake on my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. General public comment.
Whitney Maloney Gladstone literally just ran here. Would have loved to have been able to do this over Zoom. Okay. Couple comments that I want to address about the airport. Um, I ran here because I just heard the discussion about hiring the attorney to look into that matter at the airport. Sorry, I literally ran. I'm out of breath. Okay. So the new airport manager said in regard to the PFC program being a non-collection, quote, "What I can't account for and I just don't understand is how did this go on for four years without anyone in leadership position clearly knowing what was going on with it? When I discovered this and briefed it to the board back in November, everybody's jaws dropped. That leaves only a handful of alternatives. Either she didn't share the information with them or they received it in an incorrect way. I don't know. It's hard to wrap my mind around how something so significant was not captured or better understood by a large portion of leadership." Unquote. New airport manager in regards to the PFC program being a non-collection. I personally went back to over the airport board meetings back to twenty twenty, page by page. And that PFC was explicitly on the board agenda eleven times since twenty twenty. From twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, Moyle was on that board. He attended five meetings in twenty twenty, one meeting in twenty twenty-one, and four meetings in twenty twenty-two. Of those eleven PFC discussions on those agendas, the first was on, um, February fourteenth of twenty twenty-two, when the PFC program was on the agenda, quote, "Currently been suspended because the audit hasn't been done yet. Anderson and Tackman are three years behind," unquote. Anderson and Tackman being the third-party auditor who was not doing the audit, and that's why the PFC program was suspended on the agenda. The second time out of those eleven that Moyle was there, he made a motion, quote, where is it? I'm sorry. Okay. Dave Moyle made a motion to use a different company for our PFC audits going forward. That motion was seconded by Jay Bostwick, unquote. So that means, Mr. Moyle, that you were on that board, the PFC was on that agenda eleven times, you were there personally for two of them, you missed most of them. There's a ten-month period that you didn't even attend the board meetings. So it's very curious to me that you now want to hire an attorney to go back and look when you should have yourself, being on that board for twelve years, at least informed the new airport manager about this program, instead of repeating the lie that you have been, that the board didn't know about it, and that the county lost out on a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There's a lot more details to go, to go in here, but it's very important to address. These are the facts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for general public comment? Okay, general public comment is closed. We'll move on to commissioners' concerns. Mr. Peterson?
Um, I just want to bring this up. Um, I, I forwarded an email that I got, uh, and a conversation, uh, that I had the administrator for Houghton County. And it's about the opioid funds. And he came up with what I thought was just a wonderful idea. And he's trying to bring several counties in the Upper Peninsula in. And it's just in the dream stage right now, I guess you'd say. Um, but what, uh, what he was talking about was many of the counties across the Upper Peninsula pooling their opioid funds, all or some of them, depending on what, what the cost would be, to put in a, uh, mental health clinic in the Upper Peninsula. Right now, um, basically, we transport these people, uh, to places down lower Michigan. He said his pla- his, uh, county is paying about three thousand dollars a trip to take these people to lower Michigan to the, I guess it's the only place available. So his idea was, like I said, to bring the counties together, set up a, a mental health institution here in the Upper Peninsula, then charge the health department with staffing it. Um, there's still a lot of research to do. Uh, we just had a brief initial conversation, but, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner View and Commissioner Baron are on the opioid, uh, task force. And so, um, I will get information to them and let them run with this ball. Uh, the reason why he got ahold of me was because him and I met in Lansing this spring and had a dis- had, uh, several discussions about different things. And so, uh, he used me as a point of contact, but I will be handing that off to the opioid, uh, the people that are handling the opioid money. Uh, and I guess that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, Bob. Commissioner View?
I want to thank the Conservation District and Rory Mattson for the many years of service, uh, to our board and taking over our parts. I'm sorry to see, uh, both, both entities leave, but we must move on. I appreciate, uh, their chair, Mr. Kaplan, uh, offering us help down the road if we need it. It's something that'll be in the back of my mind because I won't be afraid to ask for help. I attended on the nineteenth Pine Crest meeting, on, uh, uh, the Personnel Committee meeting on the fifteenth, uh, Board of Health meeting on the twelfth and the eleventh, once with the Finance Airport, uh, meeting. I only, uh, attended it. I was only half there. I had to leave early for a MAC environmental meeting, Gladstone City Commission meeting, and Eskenaba Township Board meeting. And I just, I, I'm not going to give any details what happened there, but if anything, anyone wants any information on the input from the meetings, I, I'd be glad to, uh, uh, talk with them about what was going on, because I did keep notes. I think our airport manager is moving forward. There's a lot of things I don't agree with on how we do it. But I think the final, I think a year from now, we're going to be right on track where we need to be. And I'm just proud to have him on board. I just, uh, like to go, uh, make sure we, uh, solidify everything that needs to be done according to what he's portrayed as far as if things were done wrong or so. People make mistakes. Things happen. Third-party providers, um, causes disruption at times. Where all the documents and stuff are that we need, I'm hoping that we can somehow get them. I always thought that they were on servers and that even if we delete them off our electronic devices, they could be replicated back on our devices. So that kind of confuses me on the electronic part of it, why, why that is missing. So that's important. The other thing is in the, uh, I'm going to be quick.
Take your time.
In, in the, uh, what's the budget? I would, I, I read of a line item for a Labrador, a, a, a lab dog or, or something.
A labica dog?
And, and canine training and that. I mean, it, I, I would like to have some, that person come and talk to us about what, what, what that dog does and and it was quite expensive, but it was probably well worth what we spent. And is that a new dog or is that an old?
It is a new dog. Um, the Sheriff's Department received a donation for that amount. So it was a private donor that purchased that dog.
Okay, but it would be nice to inform the, the, the citizens and, and, and the board. Do we have more than one dog then? Is that with this, is it, I'm interested in because it's a lab.
Yes.
Compared to a, what is there usually a German shepherd?
So this is a tracking dog.
Okay. Well, it would be nice to know the background of it.
Also, I think, if I remember correctly, talking with the sheriff.
Correct.
That, uh, he was saying that the lab, the, the lab is more friendly around people when they go to events or whatever. That it'd be more conducive to be around people than shepherd.
I'm, I'm interested in good stuff that's happening in the county, and I think this is something really good that, uh, I'm interested in, and I'm sure there's people in the community that would like to hear about this, our new little lab. The last thing, um, did you, did we put out, um, notification for the opioid task force, Ashley? Have we received any applications?
I received one. Have you received more than that?
No.
I think we were CC'd on it, the same one. Okay.
Well, that doesn't sit good if you only received one, and we have a lot of criteria for specialties to be in there and.
We'll put it out again.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I don't know how we put it out. I mean, is, is there any funds to make, like make a radio announcement or a little ad in the paper or something?
PSA, we could do that.
We can look into that.
Okay. And, and as far as Mr. Peterson's comment on there, anything like that is what we're looking for. But I think this task force will best hone in, if we get the right people of criteria to be on this force, we'll be able to make decisions what's best for our county and advise our board that way. And last, Merry Christmas to all the commissioners, staff, the employees, and especially our constituents. And I'm looking forward to a beautiful New Year. I already got five goals set up that I'll hone in for the top three starting next year. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mellor.
I too would like to wish the Conservation District and Rory, I do know what those parks looked like, holes in the roof. It was just unbelievable. Me and Rory, we, along with Commissioner Harrington and Commissioner Revard, did a lot of work on that fourteen-hundred acres. The four of us went down to, I think it was Lexington at the, the DNR Trust Fund to get that money. Rory did a great job on speaking. So all that, good job. We got it. Second, went to a Ensign Township meeting Wednesday, and the supervisor, his name is John Wolf, and it was last Wednesday. He turned ninety-four years old, and he's still supervisor. So, great job to him, and he's got, he's been on that board for many, many years. Enbridge, if you haven't heard, the, they did approve the permits to start on the tunnel for under the Mackinaw, which is great. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barron?
Well, I, I'm part of the giving thanks to the Soil Conservation District and Rory Mattson for what they've done. I've got a quote here, and I think that works in with this. There's no limit to the amount of good you can do if you don't care who gets the credit. Ronald Reagan and the Soil Conservation District did a whole lot of work and didn't go out and look, Rory Mattson and crew, their board members and staff, and didn't come out looking for accolades. Their accolade was the duty of the parks. Thank you so much for that. And as we go forward in this coming year, the, another quote here is that, "It always seems impossible until it's done." Nelson Mandela. See, so, so that's, that's a good way to look at, as we go forward in this next year. I have another one here. I, I don't have the author of this. I heard it and wrote it down quickly, and I apologize if I consider plagiarizing, but I thought it was pretty good. "The risk of a wrong decision is preferable to the terror of indecision." That's a good thing to look at for our coming year. And then the final one I have here is from, well, I'm going to read it, "Accept the challenges so that you may feel the exhilaration of victory." George S. Patton Jr., who was known as Bud and Guts, the general in World War II. So that's part of that, going forward in this next year.
Thank you, sir. Nancy?
Merry Christmas.
Nope, Merry Christmas to everybody, and happy and healthy New Year.
Ashley?
Um, yes. I want to bring up, I brought it up at the airport meeting that we had this afternoon. The Anderson Tacman, I pulled up their engagement contract with us. They were contracted to provide, to audit the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, their aggregate, discrete presented component units, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information, including the financial notes. And then also, it says that they will prepare the management discussion and analysis, budgetary comparison analysis, the pension liability, the schedule of expenditures and federal rewards, combining non-major fund financials. One thing that is missing in this agreement, and this is for the years of seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and it was approved by the Board of Commissioners September fifth of two thousand seventeen, is the PFC audit. So Anderson Tacman was actually never contracted with the county to audit the PFC audit. And I believe this might be an underlying issue of why they would be delinquent. So I worked at Anderson Tacman in, at that time, during those years, and I do not recall being brought up, like, PFC audits. And we did several different airports, too. So I was looking back on, okay, I don't remember this engagement letter for PFC audits. So it made me just do a deep dive.
All right, thank you. First of all, Merry Christmas. Thank you for making us a part of your evening. Whitney, I'm sorry you had to run, and we're out of breath. I have, I, I'd be happy to talk to you on the phone, like we discussed in email. My approach to advisory committees in the airport board has always been an advisory committee. The manager or the head of, you know, the department makes the calls. If I, and I don't remember doing this, but I don't doubt it, it's a part of public record, if I made the motion to replace that company, it would have been on the suggestion of the airport manager. So I, I don't have clear memory of everything I've done over the last twelve years. And I don't lie about things. I might not be able to give you what you want to hear, but I'm not going to sit up here and lie. I have never had a problem getting reelected, because I approached my service to the county of, if I don't make an advisory board committee, I will stay, and I've said this before a dozen times at these candidate forums, I have no problem staying informed. That's, my job is to keep the public informed and make the best vote that I can. And so I might not be able to give you the information you want to hear, but it certainly will be honest as the way I understand it. And I have no problem with somebody recording my conversation with them, because I'm not going to say anything that's going to be clandestine or whatever. I'm very well advised in what my point is up here. You may not agree with what I do, but that doesn't make it corrupt or illegal. I believe that Mr. Randstadler is doing the best he can, and I totally support what he's doing. I wish you guys a safe and Merry Christmas and good health, because pretty much that's all you have, really, is your health. And thank you very much for coming. In case any of you want to communicate with me regarding what's going on, nine oh six two three five eight four two seven. If you're sincere, I'll spend as much time on, if you can, as I can on the phone. If you want to get disrespectful, you'll hear a hangup very quickly. But there's no reason why two adults cannot talk like two adults, even if they disagree with things. With that, do we have any thirty-day appointments?
Yes.
We have a QPAD appointment?
Uh huh.
Okay. And we also have, well, our next Board of Commissioners meeting is, where is that? Is that not set up yet? Yeah, sure it is here. All right. A reorganizational Board of Commissioners meeting is going to be held on one, two, twenty-four, at five PM, in the Service Center, right here. And then we, so we have a thirty-day notice of appointment to QPAD, and then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, support?
You know, all in favor of relief, have a Merry Christmas, guys.